City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting. Today is March 7th. Time is now 7:30. Let us start and stand with the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, alright. So this is a council public hearing. We have one item on the agenda to discuss. We are specifically discussing a rezoning of approximately 14.93 acres of land at the southeast corner of West Sharon Road and Waycross Road from R2, One Family Residence, to R P U D, Residential Planned Unit Development. And we are discussing and adopting a development plan for that P U D. We would particularly stick to the rezoning. Nothing else will be discussed at this time. And we actually have the developer here. Mr. Cristo will give a presentation. And after that presentation is concluded, if you would please kindly stand, go to the mic, give your name, your address, and you will have five minutes to ask, to give your comments, or to ask the developer questions. So if we can just have Mr. Cristo, please approach the podium and state your name, who you are, and what you do.
Hello, my name is Joe Cristo. I'm a developer and home builder with Cristo Homes. I work with my brother, Adam Cristo, who will be here shortly, coming from another meeting. And I'm here today to present a community that we are planning for your community. It is a community that is mixed with two types of housing. One being a townhome product, which is three stories. These will have three bedrooms, two bathrooms, optional finished areas in the lower level, and generally will be attracted to families with or without children. There's a lot of steps in these units. And they will face Waycross and Sharon Road, attractive units with variegated colors. And this project will be managed by an HOA. In the community, there's a second home design product, which we call a paired ranch. This product is essentially two living units under one roof, approximately 1,200, 1,250 square feet, two bedrooms, two bathrooms. These are one-level home designs geared toward a different demographic. Those who are either on the very, starting with their family, no kids, or those who are empty nesters who do not have children, perhaps looking to retire, or those who are just professionals who do not need as much space. The finishes will be nice, will be offering optional flooring, optional granite tops, cathedral ceilings, and a lot of the nice and new finishes that are offered today, with all the energy efficiencies. With the proposed drawing, as you see, the darker brown are the townhome units. They will be up against the busier streets, but with the area behind them, which is open space, if they do have children, they'd want to play, that would be their open space area. The tan units around the perimeter, those would be the paired ranch units, the one-level units. So it would be an interesting look for a community having two product types, serving two demographics, two markets in the same community. All the drainage for this community, the rainwater, all the runoff would be serviced within the detention pond shown in blue behind there. There were some concerns about what would be done with the drainage. There's been existing drainage on this land. Well, sure, it's not being managed. It's an open field. It has not been developed. Once it is developed, the engineers must ensure that the water is managed properly for the site, and that's what that area is in the back. I don't know if there's any elevations that are shown on other slides, or that might be done later?
I'm gonna firm up.
But that is what we are presenting here. The number of units in this community is 99 units. That is adding up all of the paired villas, along with the darker brown townhomes, as you see there. The townhomes, again, made sense with the topography, the lay of the land. The land is high near Sharon, Waycross Road, dips down to a plateau, then dips down again. So really, these two product types worked well with the engineers as we presented them here. That's what we are proposing tonight. We believe that the price point on the townhomes could start in the 340s and 350s. Of course, we would like the pricing to be more reasonable, but as a home builder right now, construction costs are higher and going higher. Lumber costs have gone up 3% over the last couple years since 2020, the pandemic started. A lot of us thought maybe pricing will come down, but they're not. They plateau, and they raise even higher. We imagine that the paired home units could start somewhere under 300,000, but when we get more details, we can firm up those numbers. Again, this community is managed by an HOA. So everyone who comes in this community, not by choice, is mandated. They are part of this homeowners association, must pay dues into the association. The association will ensure that the product is kept up to the standards set in the HOA. It will maintain the exterior of the units, the roof, the exterior, the paint, and we are considering also looking into lawn maintenance and some snow removal for the paired villas. This maintains the long-term look and vibrance of it, so people know when they move into a community that is managed by an HOA, that'll be looking good this year, next year, and the following years. That is the advantage. Yes, the disadvantage is there's rules, you get the letters, and you get the fines, but everything is set up to protect the investment of everyone's home. That's my presentation.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Cristo. Next, we will be hearing briefly from our city's planning director, Mr. Chris Anderson. He's going to go over the particulars about what exactly is a planned unit development, because we are discussing that zoning change, and he will also be discussing what's currently zoned there.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris Anderson, Community Development Director for the city. So briefly, with the zoning, this property is currently zoned R2, and that is the one of two single-family detached districts that we have in the city. There's an R1 and an R2. And the C and B sections are similarly zoned. The areas where the apartments are, Versailles Apartments to the east, and Forest Park Apartments to the north, those are zone PR3. That's our multifamily district. The planned unit development district is something like somewhat in between those two. And it's a district that was put into the zoning code to encourage creativity in development, and also a way for the city to nail down some details about the development. Basically, in the R2 and R1 districts, you have a certain lot size. That's the minimum lot size. Can't be, in R2, it's an 80-foot lot across the front, and 12,000 square feet, which is about a quarter of an acre in size. You can't go smaller than that. You could go larger. With the planned unit development, we look at the density of development overall for the district. So by zoning this R P U D 7, it's a maximum of seven dwelling units per acre. I mentioned in the R2, that maximum density is about four units per acre. So it does allow for some more units. It also allows for a mix of housing types, provided that they are single-family housing types. So an apartment community or an apartment building that was intended for renting and was managed by, I say, an apartment manager, would not be something that would be permitted in the R P U D 7 district. The reason that, well, to back up a little bit, the city acquired this property in two different pieces. There was a former swim club, which was acquired in the 1990s, and the city operated the pool for a time before closing it, and it was later known as the Activity Center. That's the northern five acres of the property. The southern 10 acres are the former Cameron Park Elementary property, which was closed by the Winwood School District, and subsequently, the building demolished. And then, the city used a neighborhood stabilization grant to purchase the property. So the city held the property for about almost 10 years. And we put it on the market in 2020. We listed it with a commercial broker. And for a period of time, we explored putting the new library that's going to be built in Forest Park on this property. But the library ultimately concluded that the topography would be too much of a challenge for their development, and we found them a different site on Northland Boulevard next to the post office. And I think that one's going to work out better for all concerned. So in putting the property on the market, we were also trying to fulfill some of the recommendations of our 2007 redevelopment plan. And one of the major recommendations was to take this combined property and develop a housing product that the city did not really have. And that is an attached, for-sale, single-family product. So that's either the townhomes, or the paired ranches, both fit that category. When we first started talking to Cristo Homes about developing this, we had, we went through several iterations of the plan, and had some detached, single-family in there. But really, the more we looked at it, first of all, the townhomes along Waycross and Sharon were very pleased with that idea. It was something that we had had back when we did some visioning sessions in 2011, to take advantage of that fall in the ground, have the garages in the back at the ground level, being the lower level, and then have two stories at street level. So what you get is an attractive front that has no garage door visible, just the front door. Gives you a nicer appearance, in my opinion, than seeing the garage doors. So I bring this up because we had done a fair amount of planning, and studying, and projecting for this property. And the development plan that has been developed and presented is a result of that. Some of these ideas for the layout of the property actually came from us on the city And this is an opportunity for the city to diversify its housing stock, to retain some residents who are in homes that they might want to downsize, or move into a more modern type of floor plan with a nice master suite, and that kind of thing. We think the paired villas, or the paired ranches, would fit the bill for a lot of those folks. Another, and this is based on housing studies that we've done, another demographic group that the city has, living here right now, but tends to lose over time, are some young professionals who start out in renting in one of our apartment communities, in Northwest, in Kensington, Remington, one of those. When it comes time to buy for the first time, they might look for a townhome. Trying buying a townhome in Forest Park, it's really difficult. And to have more of that, the recommendation from our housing consultant would help our housing market overall, in terms of comparable sales, in terms of home appreciation over time. The recommendation from that study was that we had too much of a one-dimensional housing market, or housing stock, and it was placing a little bit of an upper limit on where prices could go, and the competitiveness of that product. So the ability to move into a better fit of housing for really some of our most treasured and capable citizens was something that was attractive to us, as well as the ability to retain young professionals who are here as renters already. And I hope that explains everything with the zoning. Really, the R P U D 7 is not that different from the single-family detached zoning, R2. The main thing is the overall density calculation, number one, and the ability to vary the housing types. And then the third is that we are going to have some things that will be approved by our planning commission, and then required of the developers, such as the exterior materials, the details on the open space, and, well, there's a whole list of them, but I won't go over them all. But that is, if this goes forward, would be the next step in the process of approval. They would come back to us with a final development plan, which would have a finer degree of detail. But overall, the planning commission reviewed this at a pretty long meeting, and voted six to zero to recommend that the city council pass the rezoning. They found that the development was unified in design, and that it met the goals of the redevelopment plan, and it also fit in the area as a transition between the higher-density apartments and the somewhat lower-density existing single-family neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. At this time, if any resident has any questions for Mr. Anderson or Mr. Cristo, please come to the podium. Like I said, state your name, your address, and we are discussing specifically the zone change from R2, One Family Residence, to a residential planned unit development. If you'd just come up to the podium.
My name is Peggy Rouse. I live at 633 Cascade. My question is, how will you handle the traffic that's going to increase in that section? Has anybody considered that?
Have a microphone here? Okay. Well, yes. The traffic exiting from the development, there are two ways to get in and out of there on Sharon Road, as well as Waycross. The increase in the number of trips is not so substantial that either one of those roads or the intersection between the two couldn't handle. They're both operating at a level of service of A or B, which is considered very good in terms of traffic engineering, and that would not change with the addition of 99 dwelling units. So for example, there are over 600 dwelling units in the C section. The B section has about 250 or so. And so in comparison with those numbers, you also have the apartments. We already have a lot of dwelling units in the area, and the roads are operating, and the intersections and the traffic signals are operating at acceptable levels or better right now. So this addition, in terms of percentage-wise, is not very great.
I somewhat question that, because of Cascade and Carlsbad, and Carlsbad and Waycross, because most of the homes are just single garages, single driveways. There are so many cars parked there, especially on Carlsbad. When you're turning off the Cascade onto Carlsbad, that gets really crowded. People don't yield. And I'm concerned if you've got people, I don't know where the street will be coming out of the new development. Will it be right there at the Cameron Park driveway, probably?
Not quite that alignment. It would line up with Carlsbad.
Well, just really quick, this public hearing has a specific focus. We're discussing specifically how you feel about the zoning change. We can, there will be another portion when we start our council meeting for public comment, where you can ask about any other particular details for this development, but as it relates to changing from zoning from R2 to the P U D, if you can give your input on that, as well as any other resident, as we discuss the public hearing.
But that's affecting the traffic. So the way that affects the change in the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Cristo or Mr. Anderson?
Teresa Rodriguez, 780 Evangeline Road. I want to know why our community, which is the second-largest city in the county, does not have a community or rec center. That's badly needed, and this property would be one of the best locations to do that. I know it was tried for 20 years ago. Population has changed, demographics have changed. Why can't this property be made available for a community center instead of another housing development?
Well, thank you for your question, but if you could just hold that until the comments from the public section of our council meeting, because like I said, this public hearing is specifically on how residents feel as it relates to the zoning change. If you're in favor of it, or if you're in favor of it or against it. Does anyone have any other questions as it relates to the zoning change? Mr. Weirs, you can go up.
My name is Brendan Weirs. I live at 11261 Hanover Road, and I'm very pleased to hear the zoning proposal to go to P U D. It was something debated many years ago, and not realized at a time when there was density objections. But this, at the density level of seven, seems to be manageable, in a way that previous proposals were not. But as I look at the diagram now, more specifically, the question before me is, where are the homes facing out on Sharon, and where is the Versailles Apartments in relation to the diagram shown?
The Versailles Apartments are right here, in this grade. They're a little bit grayed out. This is Sharon Road across the top.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing where you're pointing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm pointing with a little hand there.
Yeah, he's pointing with the mouse.
If you can see there, right in that upper-right corner. There's the apartments, this is Sharon Road, and these are the townhomes.
And their driveways are red. White?
Yeah, well, the street, yeah. Yes, yes.
Thank you. I'm not sure.
Okay, do any other residents have any questions for Mr. Cristo or Mr. Anderson as it relates to this particular zoning change?
Mr. Mayor, could they please sign their names, the spelling of their names?
Yes, if you can do the sign-in sheet, sign your name, and then state your name and address.
My name is Carlos Gray, and I live at 638 Brunner. And the question that I have for Mr. Cristo specifically, because on Brunner, it appears to me that the retention pond would be backed up right to our property. Is there, how do you manage, how are you going to manage the retention pond? Because it's back, that part, now I can see it, but that's backed up right to our fence, that area right there. How is that?
Yeah, if they can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Won't we ask questions on how we're going to manage the storm basin on the development?
Right, because it's just, are you going to fish out of it, or what are you going to do with that? Because it just appears to be, it can't be, and I've seen it in other communities, where it becomes just an open water basin.
Well, the good news is that the storm basin will be designed by engineers. We have a woman that we work with in Liberty Township, and a lot of times we get lost in the conversation, because she's very detailed about the specifics of the water flow, the percolation of the soil, the rain amounts, and I just say to my engineer, "You designed it right." She says, "Yes, and it's going to work proper." I says, "Yes, and that's what the engineers do. They put all the detail based upon the storm water, certain rain events, how long the water will be held in that basin, based upon the soil, how much the soil percolates water." It's designed to manage properly the water that falls onto the boundaries within the red line, and holds it for the designated amount of time, so that it doesn't necessarily affect properties outside of its boundaries. So that is what I can tell you, the engineers work on. That's why the engineers are designing it. They understand these details. And at this point, is that a water-holding basin, a dry basin?
It could be either, but generally, they're dry basins. And they'll be fully managed enough, kept by the HOA, so always will have a management body taking care of maintaining it, mowing it, keeping it upkeep.
So the basin, whether it's dry or wet, meaning holding water, or the type of basin that will hold water temporarily until it absorbs into the earth, all of the area in green will be maintained by the HOA, being, mowed and managed on a weekly basis. So the basin will be attractive and mowed at all times.
Okay, the water table in that area is really pretty high. So if you say it's going to be a dry basin, it probably will not be dry simply because of the water table in that area, which is relatively high.
Most part of our development is, we actually go in and do soil samples, and we do cores, and engineers use that data from the design of the basin. So there are issues like that. That means that the basin will be wider and less depth, depending on the level of that water table. So that's all part of the engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Just as we close out the public hearing portion, really quick, as it relates to the zoning change, if we could just get a show of hands, and maybe if Sally, if you can give a tally about if people are in favor of the zoning change from R2 to P U D, or if they are against. And as I stated, when we start our actual council session, there will be a point in which you can make comments from the public, you can go to the podium, and then you can ask any question that you have, not just about this particular development, but any question for any concerns that you have in Forest Park. And we allot for that at every council session. We always have that on the agenda. But as a show of hands, if people can say if they are in favor of the zone change from R2 to R P U D, we can just see those hands really quick. R2 to RPUD, we can just see those hands really quick? Okay, all right. And then, if you can just give a show of hands if you are against that particular zone change? And please keep them up while we tally that up. And we will conclude, at this point, we will conclude the public hearing, but we're going to roll right into our council work session, I mean, our actual council meeting, and when we get to the comments from the public, then you can still go to the podium and state your name, address, and ask any question of council or the developers. So, moving on. Just really quick, if anyone does need to leave, though, feel free at any moment to just stand up and go out, but we're going to go ahead and start the council meeting now, so.